Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the February 4th, 2019 Salisbury City Council Work Session. We have a pretty good agenda today, so let's get right into it and start off with 501 West Isabella Property Acquisition. Tom's not here. Bill, you're pinch hitting. Welcome. Got to get your mic up. You got it. Yes.
The city field operations is making an effort to purchase the entire block which constitutes Isabella, Mack, Lake, and Delaware. We're in the early process. We've purchased two properties at this point. We purchased 503 West Isabella in the fall, and to finish the block at the corner of Lake and Isabella, we needed to purchase 501. So we reached an agreement with the property owner in December, and we're bringing it before council for approval today.
Can you just give us a sort of a brief summary? I hate to put you on the spot, but a brief summary of what the long-range plan is for...
The city and the CIP has a multimillion-dollar plan, totally wise. We'll be redoing an administrative building. We'll be moving our utility service center, which is next to the river. We'll be relocating that, and that'll become city property to use at that point. Utility Department will be moving two field operations currently. At that point, we're also going to exit the parking area that we use on the east side of Lake Street, and hopefully, potentially, that'll be a playground. And in addition, not before us today is we'll try to reach an agreement with the church to utilize a co-op for a parking area on the north side of Mack Avenue.
Okay. Any questions? None? We have consensus? Okay. Thank you. Tell Tom congratulations.
Thank you.
Okay. Next up, Mr. Pyle, we have some bylaw changes, correct?
Correct.
Come on. Mr. Alessi, are you joining him? We're not letting you off, so...
I've got a mic to phone for you.
How are you, Ralph?
Good. How are you folks?
I'm good. Go right ahead.
Well, this is very straightforward, hopefully. We're amending the bylaws of the Zoo Commission to reflect the past changes in the organizational structure of the city, and so removing references to the Public Works Department and replacing that with field operations. And then there's one other language change in there, striking the requirement that the corporation, the Zoo Commission, maintain an inventory of the animal collection annually. With our record-keeping systems now, we maintain that through the zoo operations and the zoo staff, and can produce those any time one is requested.
And I think anything I saw, it's a federal requirement, so that the inventory would have to be submitted anyway, so...
Right. And it's also a requirement for the AZA accreditation process.
Which you're going to start soon.
We're in the process of pulling all the written materials together for it. Those are due around the first of March, and then sometime late spring, early summer, we'll have a visit by the accreditation site inspection team.
Great. Look forward to that. Well, we do. I don't know. I know it's...
I look forward to it being done.
Yeah, I know. I know it's a lot of work. It's a lot of work, but you have good records, so I'm anticipating any issues. All right, Mr. Alessi?
He starts early.
I know.
You've been working on this probably at least six months?
Yeah, I mean, it's just a matter of getting the team together and producing documents and editing them, and producing reports like the inventory and getting all that together in the format they want, so not terribly hard, but time-consuming.
It was 80 pages?
Something like that, yes.
He's not getting a raise. We wish you a lot of luck.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Great. I'm sure it's going to go well. Any questions or comments about the changes in the bylaws?
Just thank you.
We have consensus?
Thank you, folks.
Thanks again. Thanks for coming in.
Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, we have an annexation Johnson Road. Mr. Holland, how are you?
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. I recently received a petition for annexation from Mr. Dirk Woodson. The formality is to first come before council for a work session to get approval to move on. This proposed annexation located 927 Johnson Road consists of approximately 1.25 of an acre site. It's located on the northern quadrant of Johnson Road, and rear property line is contiguous to the Shoemaker Manor development. The purpose of this annexation, the property currently has two dwelling units, and one's on a septic system which is failing, and the other dwelling unit has a cesspool which they want cleaned up at probably the earliest. And, you know, our next... The next proceeding would be to move to the Planning Commission to get the property rezoned and then work up an annexation agreement and get it back here. There is no concept plan right now. You know, you've got a copy of the annexation plan, so it should be a simple... It should be a simple, easy annexation.
Questions or comments?
Not a simple, easy annexation.
Okay. All right. We have consensus then? Okay. We're good.
Thank you all very much.
Next, we have the US 13 North PennTex Phase II Annexation. Mrs. Pollak, how are you? Today, you're Mrs. Pollak. You had a cast of thousands. We have enough chairs? I don't know if we have enough microphones.
Yeah, we do.
All right. Good afternoon, everyone.
Good afternoon.
This is to discuss the PennTex Phase II Annexation. We came before council in January, and there were a lot of open questions, and so we decided to come back to work session and try to address some of those questions point by point. So the PennTex team is here to answer questions. In particular, they're going to do a presentation and discuss the overall site layout and why the buildings are positioned where they are versus the parking lot, talk about runoff, traffic, trees, and lights, the lighting issues. And I think that would cover most of the comments that we got previously.
Those are the ones on my list.
Sure. So Jeff, are you sorry?
I'm sorry.
Jeff Harmon with Becca Morgan Group.
Hi, Jeff.
Hi, how are you doing?
Could you maybe push that microphone over?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that good there?
That's good.
Okay. So I'll try and talk into the mic and do my best Van Halen impression at the same time here. We have here a rendered site plan for you that probably gives you a little bit better idea of what the proposed site plan is going to look like. The layout is very similar to what was there before. There's been only various minor... Very minor, small modifications. So I guess where to start? I guess you mentioned building placement first, so we'll start there. So PennTex Ventures has gone through a lot of negotiations back and forth with the tenants, and considering what we think is best from both an engineering standpoint and from an aesthetic standpoint and a noise standpoint and light, the buildings really do well placed on the pond side. The mass of the building actually serves as sort of a blockage to light, to noise, and to visually from the parking lot. At one point in time, somebody suggested, well, what if we move the fast casual restaurant pad to the other side? Well, that all of a sudden opens up the parking lot to the pond side. You're going to see cars. You're going to see parking lot lights. You're going to hear noise, cars opening, closing doors, and engines, and, you know, so there's... We think that there's a lot more traffic that will be seen. So having that building there, it's a static object. It's not moving constantly, and the colors of the building can be such that they blend with the natural environment. So we think that that really is a good placement. And from a standpoint for the owners, it gives them good visibility from the highway so that people can find their way in there better, because the last thing that you want to have is somebody looking for the restaurant in the back and drive by because they couldn't see it from the highway, only realizing that they passed it after they got past the entrance, and then you're making a U-turn at the next light and coming back. And so it really does make a lot of sense from a traffic standpoint as well. One thing that I'd like to point out is we have colored along the pond side. The previous aerial image that we had underneath of our rendering really didn't do justice as to how much of the existing trees that were there that we're saving. You can see all of the very dark-colored tree symbols here, the ones that, you know, look more like actual leaves, the irregular shapes. There's probably 20 or 25 trees that are in there that we're keeping. So you can see the extent of all the trees along the pond bank that are remaining. And with the dark green color that we've shaded along the bank, that's where the existing slope is from the yards that go down, and all of that is going to remain as it is right now. We're going to go in and clean out the dead branches and the trees that have fallen over, but we're also going to look for opportunities to add additional plantings in there, things that would look right there, not just plantings for the sake of putting some more trees in, but things that would make it a natural pond edge, you know, some native species that look like they belong, something to help make that bank something that is attractive for the residents across the pond to look at, rather than, you know, just a slope that's got lawn area on it. That's not really what we want to see there. Along the drive-through in here, we have shown a continuous hedge. We don't know the plant material for that yet. We've got our landscape architect to specify something that's appropriate, but the intent there is a dense planting, closely spaced plants, plants that will be evergreen, that will be year-round color so that, you know, in the wintertime, we don't see through them. And that would serve to screen the drive-through lane, the order board, and the parking lot that's in between the two buildings, also screening the rest of the parking beyond as well, too, so that you don't see it. And this site is elevated about 10 feet above the pond, so by the time we get some shrubs in there that are probably, you know, six or eight feet tall, you won't be able to see what's happening over on the site there with the height of those plants that are going to be planted along that edge. So we think that that buffer is going to be really good. And we're going to look for opportunities to plant maybe a couple different varieties so you don't end up with just the big hedge along there, something that tries to make it look like it's naturally there, rather than just, you know, the row of single kind of tree there. So the rest of the site, you can see that we've looked for lots of opportunities for landscaping. Along the southern edge of the property, there's an existing ditch that's there now, which is kind of overgrown, can tend to collect things that blow into it. Our plan there is to enclose that with a drainage pipe so that there is no opportunity for trash to blow into that anymore, probably be mounted up a little bit to help with a visual barrier, and then plant new trees all along that edge so that not only are we screening the Aldi from the restaurant parking lots, we're screening the Aldi from everybody across the other side of the pond as well, too. So if there happened to be some little view where you could see in between a couple trees that are left along the pond bank, there's a second line of defense there to help screen that additional use on the corner. Let's see, what else did we talk about?
Jeff, there were a couple questions about the placement of the entrance and also the connectivity in front of Aldi.
Yeah, I see that up in...
Yes.
That's a driveway up on the top.
So Betty Tustin with the traffic group is here, and I'll let her talk about the traffic a little bit.
All right. Yes. So yes, there is connectivity to Aldi here so that people that can use actually the Dagsboro entrance to get over to the restaurants also, if they want to shop at Aldi and then go out to eat, or vice versa, they don't have to go back out on the red system. And this is the preferred location. We did a traffic impact study. State Highway has approved this location. They approved our study, and that's where they would like the side access to go. So, you know, we have definitely several different outlets. We've got this outlet here that someone can continue north, or they have about a quarter mile if they want to use that crossover to make a U-turn to go south. They can also exit out to here, to Dagsboro, to go to the east or other way. So in the traffic flow onsite works very well and played out in a really nice way.
And could you explain that Aldi had a term in their lease about access on the front?
Right. Yeah, there was some discussion before about, well, why aren't we connecting across the front of Aldi's parcel? And that was really a term... PennTex was the developer for these two restaurants and was for the Aldi as well. So when they were in the process of the early stages of this, they were already talking to Aldi about, hey, we think an interconnection is a good idea, and really, good developers do that. They look for ways to interconnect parcels, and that helps with traffic mitigation. And Aldi said, that's fine, but we have a traffic concern, a safety concern, with cars for the neighbor running across the front of our store. We have our customers coming out with their shopping carts, with their kids, and so, you know, having that traffic flow through there was something that they wouldn't do. So there is a condition in their lease that says that the only allowable connection point is at the rear, and that does make some sense. You're splitting your traffic up, so everybody that's looking for that spot next to the front door isn't competing with the people that are trying to get over to the restaurants. It separates that traffic flow, and it helps balance the flow onsite. And it's also important to note that the two restaurants are two different kinds of restaurants. This one up here, we can reveal to you who it is now. The restaurant in the back is going to be Ripianos. They have a place in Ocean City now, and their concept here for Salisbury is fine dining. So if you think white tablecloths and wine glasses, that's what Ripianos is going to be. So they have a evening, dinnertime and late evening type of dinner crowd. This restaurant here, we can't tell you who it is yet, but think upscale, fast casual. I can tell you, it is not McDonald's. It is not Burger King. It is not any of those fast-food-type restaurants. This is something that's more upscale. You're going to see more breakfast and lunch at this location. So from a traffic standpoint, we're going to see a balance throughout the day of the traffic. You're going to see one generating traffic at different times of the day than the other. So that helps to mitigate how much is coming in and out of the site, and those work very well together, and PennTex actually worked to try and find that right combination for the site. And so they were fortunate to find just the right tenants to be here. So we think that that's another thing that's going to really help with this site.
So Betty, could you talk a little bit about Dagsboro Road and the queuing of the light?
Right. Well, queuing was one of the analyses that State Highway asked us to look at, and during the, I think, the morning peak hours, kind of the more crucial peak hour on Dagsboro Road, and we will have a queue that does extend back, but not so far that it caused an issue with roadway here. Thank you. You slipped my mind there.
The exit behind Aldi up on...
Yes.
Right there. How far is that from... Do you know how far that is from the corner?
I think it's about 500 feet.
Oh, okay.
Is that not right?
About right. Okay.
And then, of course, this is a signalized intersection, and if problems occur with queuing, State Highway can make some modifications to the timing to give this... To give Dagsboro more time to clear out.
Think runoff was a question?
Yes. Okay. So I've got another rendering here to give you an idea. It's basically the same site plan rendering, but what we've added on to it are storm drain pipes and our underground infiltration system. So the dark blue arrows are sort of where the water on the surface of the ground's going to flow. So we see water heading towards these light blue lines, which represents the pipes underground and the catch basins. So all this water is going to get funneled away from the pond and go towards the collection system, which comes to our underground storage area in the parking lot here. And that's the same style system that was approved for use over at Aldi, and that has... Let's see, I think we have four rows of chambers underground. The first row is what they call... I'm trying not to get too technical on you, but it's called an isolator row. So that isolator row is specifically designed to trap any kind of pollutants that are coming, running off. So if you've got garbage, if you've got paper, if you've got, you know, floatables, all of those sorts of things go into that first row, and they can't come out. And so as a regular maintenance schedule, they will go in yearly, and they'll just use a VAC truck. They'll go in there, they'll clean all that stuff out, and that keeps all of that from getting into the pond. Right now, from these sites, you had the former gas station at Aldi, you have the real estate office, you have Barica's model home and the other house back there. All of their runoff is unmanaged right now. Everything's just running off, and especially from the gas station. Aldi really did a good job of cleaning that up. We're going to complete that for this area and treat the rest of these sites. And in our two- and 10-year design storm events, we're going from having runoff from those sites to no runoff at all. We are keeping all of the water onsite, releasing nothing to the pond. So all that stays in the system and gets infiltrated in the ground to go back into groundwater. So we're separating all those pollutants out and then recharging the groundwater. In the 100-year storm, we have almost eliminated the runoff, even in the 100-year storm. We are probably reducing it by 75% as to how much water is going into that pond. So there's going to be a significant cleanup of the runoff that is heading into the pond compared to what's there now. And as I mentioned before, you know, all of that runoff is being carried away from the pond initially in an effort to, you know, redirect it to that system so that there's no opportunity for it to get into that pond area over there.
Tom, you're first.
Sure. You're on my right.
If I'm on the highway coming from Denver, and I'm doing the requisite 47 miles an hour as I come through the lake at the Subaru place, and there are trees on that pond, what is the difference in having the... It's a new term for that particular restaurant. What'd you call it?
This one up front?
Upscale fast casual.
Upscale fast casual, yes.
I think I know what it is. There's no like... When he...
It sounds like a tuff. I bought from my high school.
You're really not seeing anything?
Let me ask specific questions first. Where's the... The front of the restaurant is obviously going to be on the southerly side. Is anything...
Which one? Which restaurant are you talking about?
If the view of the pond is not integral to the restaurant, then I'm concerned about why stuff can't go somewhere else. Because if you were to put the upscale, fast casual, is that what I'm...
Mm-hmm.
Over on the other side, won't everyone else see it coming from the opposite direction first? It's just a question. On the upscale, fast casual, where is the drive-through?
Drive-through is on the... Between the building and the pond side.
Well, I... My concern is...
The window is on the highway side. So there is no window that faces the back.
My concern would be a drive-through on waterfront property. Just it... That's... I don't know whether or not that's wrong or right, but from the standpoint of all of us trying to utilize waterfront and what everyone else has done in America to make waterfront property very expensive, we're... I'm concerned we're putting a drive-through on waterfront property. That's...
So the intention is for you to not know that the drive-through is there. That is the reason for the landscape screen that we're planning. That is the reason for the preservation of the existing trees, and that's why we plan on enhancing the existing stream bank, our pond bank that's there with additional plantings. By the time that we're done with the landscaping plan here, you won't see it.
And the traffic flows very well with it on that side. Could you come in here and go off?
Correct. I can't argue that. I just... The drive-through on waterfront property, I'm not sure if anybody else on the east coast has done that.
Sure. I'm built from PennTex, and I did all the initial, you know, work on the plan. We did investigate relocating that building to the opposite side. Brings up a couple different things. Number one, you're essentially pushing all the parking to the other side of your... To the other side, as you said, and you're putting that active commercial use on the pond, which we tried to alleviate, number one. Number two, the circulation gets... You get a lot of dead ends, and our parking yields drop. It gets a lot more challenging. We worked with Betty to determine if there's some way we could relocate that driveway further to the north to free up more of the site, to alleviate some of those concerns. But then the issue is the acceleration distance for the crossover for the U-turn. It ends up coming back from S.H.A. That I think we have about three feet more we can move in north, but other than that, we're at the... We're at the limit there. So it's a multitude of different factors here.
One comment on traffic flow, if the building were here, then as people exited, they would cross over the main drive aisle.
Correct.
And here, if the building's over here, when they exit, they do not have to cross the main drive aisle. There's fewer conflict points, much safer.
If you take that building and move it to the other side and flip it, all of a sudden, the entrance to your drive-through lane is right at the entrance to the site. And then any queuing would then back up onto the highway, which isn't safe. By turning at this direction and putting it on the other side, everybody comes in, comes around to the back, and then through the circulation lane, so it's much safer.
Does anything in the upscale restaurant have to do with the pond?
Sorry.
Seating and things of that nature?
Absolutely. Do you want to go ahead and tell us about the upscale, the Ripianos in the back, some of the water elements that we brought into that concept?
Yeah, so in the back of Ripianos Restaurant, there is a deck that's proposed out there. You've seen that. We want to leave the existing trees that are there so that the tree comes up through the deck, so that you have a much more natural feel that's there. Additional plantings down along the edge there. That restaurant is intended to engage the pond, but because of the type of restaurant it is, it's fine dining. Like I said, you've got white tablecloths, you've got expensive bottles of wine, you have a clientele that's going to be out there that is going to want a nice, peaceful, quiet dinner. You are not going to have a band. You are not going to have a bar. Those aren't the types of things that are at this restaurant. So this restaurant engages the pond, and the architecture of the building will be such that, you know, this is going to be an attractive facade because it's not the back of the building as you would think of as like the service area. That function is screened. And there's actually a patio on this corner as well, too. There's a little bulkhead here on a small dock, and so there's a patio and a walkway and a deck, and so this becomes a pedestrian area that's actually well landscaped, very attractive, but not a high-activity type area. We purposefully pushed... The dumpster is over away from the pond, hidden from view, so you're not going to see that. Plenty of landscaping. The loading zone is blocked, and it doesn't show well on the render, but there's a wall between the patio and where the loading area is going to be so that there is no visual way to visually see through to that. So we tried to make that, you know, something maybe like you'd see Ocean City or something like that, where you've got a deck that's on the bayside, where people can go out and sit and, you know, have a nice meal. Not a, like I said, not a bar, but a nice casual or upscale sit-down restaurant.
And the deck is 10 feet above the water surface?
The deck is well above the water surface. The deck will be a pervious-style deck, so it will not be a solid patio. It is not a, like you would think of a permanent structure. There's no retaining wall being built. It'll be on posts. It'll be typical deck construction where you've got openings that the water can go down through and drip onto the ground so that we're not creating an impervious surface by that. It's Ocean City, for example, when we do deck designs in Ocean City, as long as we keep those gaps between the boards, then that's considered a pervious surface, and it recharges the groundwater underneath, and we don't have any stormwater runoff issues or anything with that. So it's intended to be an amenity to it and would be attractive-looking.
I mean, I appreciate the stormwater retention system. I think that's a good thing. And I guess you'll monitor the maintenance necessary on that system. It needs it more than once a year. It needs it more than once a year. You'll, you'll come out and, and, and...
And you see, the city does require maintenance and inspection agreements, so we also have the right to go inspect at any time, and if we see that, you know, debris is backing up in the first chamber, we could ask for them to repair it.
And you're, you also have other stormwater components even beyond the big basin, too. There's also some bio...
Oh, yeah, I forgot to mention that, too, yeah.
Some slails and water quality.
Absolutely. Up front, we're trying to use more than one style of stormwater management. We, we don't wanna send everything just to the one system. I just concentrated on that because it's the bigger one. Along Route 13 here, we'll have a bio-retention facility. That's the one that has the special planting soils, and it's planted with the right kind of plantings in it that will survive in an inundation where you've got about 12 inches of water that ponds during a storm event, but then the water filters down through that soil. The plants help take, uptake the nutrients, and it cleans the water, and then it'll be filtered out, and then that will runoff through a connection to the pond there once that water's been cleaned up. So we do have this system at the front in addition to the one in the back, and the entrance runoff will also come into that as well, too, from the highway. And right now, there's a portion of the highway, in fact, all the highway in front of our site drains directly to the pond and is untreated now. We're actually taking a portion of the highway in front of our entrance here and treating that in addition to some of our site runoff as well, too. So we're, you know, going a little bit above and beyond there as well to clean up some of the highway.
Jim, any more?
Just if, we have anybody, any of the residents, if they've seen it, what they think? Just like you hear.
Can we turn, have any of the residents seen the, the new changes? Any questions that you might have regarding what you've heard in terms of their response? 'Cause all, on my list, they hit everything that, in that summary sheet that we got, there was, everything was hit on that summary sheet. So if you have additional questions...
I have one.
Could you go to the microphone, please, and state your name and your address?
My name is Claire Emmon, and I live at 30416 Mallard Drive. So I am right across from part of the area. One, there's a road that goes down by the pond, and I see that, that area between the fast-food place and everything, that apparently is open for the window. So is that the road, or are you leaving the road access and then you're moving over some more for the lane for the window?
So the, the existing driveway that goes back to the home at the rear, I think is what you're talking about.
Mm-mm.
The driveway that comes from the highway down here. That road is about where the top of bank is now. The drive-through lane for the proposed restaurant is probably over, a little further away from the pond than where that road is now, 'cause we need to have about six or eight feet worth of space.
That's what I was worried about.
Yeah, so we moved it away from the pond some so that we have adequate planting room for the screening that's gonna go next to the drive-through lane.
And the restaurant at the back, how much room is, it looks like there's literally hardly any room. It looks like there's plantings and then the, the restaurant.
So the restaurant at the back is beyond the setback line that's required by the city and also beyond the 25-foot buffer that's required from the pond. So the building is a little bit more than 25 feet at the biggest point.
Okay.
At the wider point, it's probably closer to 30 feet away from the pond.
Okay, it doesn't really look like that at all. Um, the deck, um, is there going to be piped music and that kind of thing outside, I would assume?
I don't know the specific details on it. If it is piped music, given the nature of the restaurant, it would be certainly very loud. We understand, and our, our restaurant understands that they wanna, they have to keep it, you know, they want the tranquility of the pond. So again, this isn't where there will be a band on the deck. At most, I could see a violinist on the deck. That's probably about as egregious as it would get. As far as pipe music, there could be a speaker. I wouldn't say that, you know, there definitely wouldn't be one. But we can certainly raise that with Ripianos and see what their thoughts on it would be to...
How late would the deck be used? Do you know that?
I don't see this restaurant staying open. Have you seen anything? I think probably 10, 11 would probably be the latest, I would think, this restaurant would be open. 'Cause again, it's a dinner restaurant. This isn't a, it's not a nightclub or a bar or anything, so I would think 10, 11 o'clock at the latest, it'd be full on, lights out.
Mm-hmm. In your renderings, it really doesn't show how many trees are being taken out or how many trees are being left in.
These are actually, these symbols along the edge are actually survey locations. Our surveyors went out and located the actual existing trees. There are 24 existing trees that are along there that are gonna remain, and then...
Just the ones along, close to the pond?
Along the edge of the pond, there'll be 24 trees that remain there.
And then you're wiping out all the rest?
Yeah, of the ones that are close to the pond, on the upper bank, some of them get in the way of the, the buildings here, so I, I wanna say, and this is an educated guess, about four or five trees maybe need to come out that are along that edge. The grouping of trees that are in the middle are lob-lolly pines, and there's unfortunately just no way that we can selectively save the lob-lolly pines. They survive in a group, but if you thin them and only leave a couple standing, they don't have a sufficient root structure and resistance to win by themselves, so they will need to be removed in order to, to crew the parking on that site. And that's the reason why we're enhancing with additional plantings and doing an extensive landscaping plan to replace a lot of those trees that are taken out.
And the exit for the property, we really didn't see that very well in the audience. Where's the exit?
There's a light out along Route 13, and then the other is across the back of the site, across the back of Aldi's, and out to Dagsboro Road over there.
I can't imagine that people would take that route to Dagsboro. It's so congested right now with Aldi's. I'm worried about how we get out of our neighborhood. Because the traffic for you all exiting will not be able to exit until that light has changed. And depending on the number of cars that come out, then we won't be able to get out of our neighborhood.
We anticipate, I certainly understand what you're talking about.
Yeah.
When the, when the green line at Dagsboro, it's a little, it's a bit forward, but then that light, this turn heads from the Dagsboro and the road across, can also act as a key to, from your experience, witness those gaps. We anticipate between the two restaurants that you might see a 2% to 3% increase in traffic during the peak hour. Traffic engineers, we always wanna look at the most heavily traveled hour of the day. We figure if we can handle that traffic, the other 23 hours of the day are fine. So our projections, that have been reviewed by State Highway and their consultants, will project a 2% to 3% increase in traffic during that one, one hour of the day.
Which hour?
When is the peak hour?
Well, the peak hour of the day that we look at is the hour of the day that's heavily, most heavily traveled toward the, toward the corridor, which is the US 13. So we're talking about the evening peak hour rush, somewhere between 4:00 and 6:00 P.M. Again, as, as Jeff mentioned, these restaurants, the upscale casual will probably be more breakfast lunch crowd, and the dinner probably might not even affect the evening peak hour between 4:00 and 6:00, and the amount of people each at 6:00, 7:00.
And your analysis just takes into account the fact that there are restaurants and not specifically the type of restaurant, and when their peaks generate based on how the restaurant is operating, correct?
Exactly. And, and just like in, in all phases of engineering, we analyze the worst-case scenario. There are safety factors built in, not only when you design structures, but also when you analyze traffic. There's quite a bit of safety analysis that is, is built in to make sure that we're analyzing the most critical time of the day.
So the 2% to 3% really is likely not going to happen, given the nature of the two restaurants. In fact, they're not overlapping with their uses, and that, you know, the analysis may say that it's 2% to 3%, but that's if they were both operating at full, full speed at the peak hour, which, you know, wouldn't be the case.
And to put it in perspective, 2% to 3%, what we're talking about is 1,300 vehicles traveling northbound on, on that roadway. So 2% to 3% is not that big of a number.
If you add it to the Aldi's, how's come far enough just that number? What did the Aldi do?
The Aldi does about the same thing, about the same, same percentage, but as Bill was trying to point out, again, this is the way the traffic engineering is working. Aldi is probably more realistic, too, than peak hour, because people stop at Aldi on their work.
Correct.
But the, the restaurants that we're speaking of here will probably, is likely not generate those kind of volumes during, and they're not big volumes during the evening peak hour. It's just the way that everybody does it.
Any, any other questions?
No.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead.
My name's Steve Brewer, and I live on the pond as well. And you've done a lot of work since we talked, I talked with you all earlier in the process. A couple of things that, that come to my mind, and I've walked the property a number of times, so I know how many trees are there, and, and I understand the issues that you have from a building perspective for, for your clients as well as people coming and going, you guys, and, and getting in and out. On the pond side, it's my understanding that, is the deck, is the deck connected to the, to the restaurant? Or is it, so it's connected? I'm not, and I'm, I'm between the devil and deep blue sea here, because I like what you have done better than what I'm going to ask. So, but I'm gonna ask it because it's a technical question.
She's running rough.
Well, I, I was, I was a school teacher for years, but I also built for years, and so I've had my hands in both ways. And there's a 25-foot setback, and while I prefer that to having a facade on that building that is not attractive, because that could easily be done, I also would think that from an infrastructure question, if there's a 25-foot setback and they are linked together, then that doesn't adhere to that 25-foot setback.
Well, that's, that, I think, is really a function of the actual structure. When I, when I say linked together, it's not the same foundations, it's not the same structure, per se. The building is in and of itself, and then adjacent to it, where they attach, very much like the one down at your house.
Sure, sure.
It is, in fact, the center of the structure, and that's the variant by which we comply with the setback, just correct?
And then, and then the deck, the deck then, and I'm just trying to get an understanding myself, so that we're all on the same page. Then the deck itself becomes more like a boardwalk that someone on the pond would have as opposed to an extension of that structure? From a technical standpoint?
Yes, to some, that is, that could be a fair assumption.
Okay.
The comparison.
The, the backside of the other restaurant on the pond, where we're driving around, what's that wall gonna look like? Is it gonna be glassed? Are the patrons gonna be able to see out?
No, there, there are no windows on that rear wall. The finishes, I do have four different options for that upscale fast casual restaurant that is not named. And all four facades are finished similarly, so this isn't gonna be where you're having a pretty face and then everything around it is blocked. I mean, that's certainly not the case. There will be attractive finishes on all four sides. No windows on the side facing the pond. There are limited windows on the side facing the Ripianos. There is the drive-through windows and a singular window on the wall facing towards directly 13, and then on the main wall, that wall is where all of your windows are. When you see kind of the bump outs, those are your, your entry-to-way areas.
Okay, and what about the HVAC and the venting and all of that? Where's that gonna come out?
Those will all end up being on the roof screened through parapets. And again, we're, we're going to make sure that we mitigate any impacts to the neighbors, you know, with the, you know, those high parapets to block the views and also...
Yeah, I don't know this young lady that spoke before me, but I know about where she lives, and that would be something that if I was in that neighborhood, would concern me. Because I don't wanna see an industrial-looking something when I look out my, if I'm sitting on my deck having my coffee in the morning, I don't wanna look across and see...
The towering smoke, yeah, I hear you.
And the same with the, now, you've done a good job with the trash pickup on the other. What about the bins and stuff down here? Is it gonna be...
That'll be up, up front, again, landscaped to the rear, maintaining existing vegetation to the rear. Those will both be full masonry enclosures, so these are not the fence with the slats to achieve what we're gonna, you know, full masonry enclosures here, very durable, make sure that they are fully screened.
Okay.
And there's much more room around this front one. There's more upland land area, on the onshore, top of bank is, so there's plenty of opportunity to screen that well. It won't even be visible once the plants mature on it.
And I would, I would make a suggestion, having walked the property a number of times, where the, the lower restaurant is, the tree line is pretty thick going south from about the back corner of, of the, the southern, southern pond corner of the, the second restaurant. It's fairly thick going up that way, but coming from there down to the highway, it thins out pretty quickly. So I was suggesting your landscape plan that you do a lot of work in there to protect Mallard Drive and those, those neighborhoods over there, because that is visible from the other side of the pond, and...
Correct. As Jeff indicated, we are gonna maintain the trees there. As far as the undergrowth and the underbrush, we're gonna remove the invasive species and naturalized plantings, and we're gonna enhance that buffer. You know, with, again, additional plantings. We're not gonna go in and just mow it and leave the trees. That's not at all the case. We wanna remove what shouldn't be there and put in materials that should be there that'll form that dense screen. And then in addition to that, on our side up at the top of the bank, at a point where we're further away from the pond than the existing roadway, this area, that's where then the continuous hedge, I mean, we'll commit to good size of plant height, so that immediately screens on top of the enhanced screen on the back.
I've just got three other quick comments, and then I'll sit down. The, the ditch that you're talking about that runs from 13 alongside Aldi's and then goes underground again and comes out into that collection ditch that comes across from...
Down the back, yeah.
Yeah, and empties into the pond.
Correct.
My understanding, based on what you said a while ago, is that you were going to put a, like a concrete pipe or something in, and then that'll be covered over?
Correct.
And the access then across the backside of Aldi's is gonna then come, they'll cut that curbing out, and it'll connect across that...
Correct.
Onto the other property.
That is correct. There will be a pipe system that'll go underneath. You can see it here on these, there are pipe systems that'll connect that slot underneath, connect with the existing pipe.
Yeah, and there's, there's a pipe that comes under there right now from Aldi's, from their collection...
Correct.
System that empties into that.
Correct.
So based on what I heard you say a while ago, the collection system that you've planned for here is sufficient that with a 2% to 10-year storm, you're gonna have nothing coming out of a pipe like that? That it's gonna all be retained?
Yeah, correct. All the side out for us.
But that's not the case with Aldi's?
I don't remember specifically Aldi's, but I know that they were held to the same standards, and I believe they are net-net zero 210 as well.
Yeah, that's, that's what I was gonna say. That is our city standard.
Well, the only reason I'm saying that is I've been over several times after some recent rains, and there is water coming out. So, not, not a lot.
Yeah, that pipe system also drains the county road, so Dagsboro Road comes through that, too. So the water that you're seeing is likely runoff from Dagsboro Road.
Okay.
Correct.
So it would, it would then somehow get connected into the same line. I see what you're saying.
Right. So those are bypass systems from existing infrastructure that'll continue as they are, but our proposed system and Aldi's proposed system mitigate the onsite infrastructure improvements to net, net those out.
Okay, on Aldi's property, where you have the, the islands to direct traffic and... Okay, on Aldi's property, where you have the, the islands to direct traffic and, and all of that. And then there's been some, what they did, I guess they're collection sites also for, for water?
Yeah, I think in Aldi's park, they have some buyer retentions.
Yeah, so, so the landscaping on that, they've gone inside and down and they had mulch. When it rained, the mulch came down. I don't know, I can't speak for everybody else, but I'd be a whole lot happier if there was something that you could do there. And I know that it's for collection, but some kind of vertical, you know, plantings as opposed to just pansies and days and low-grade stuff down in that. That's going to have to be tended quite often and I don't think it has visual appeal to us. The last comment I have is for the council and I'll, I'm going to reflect back to something Mr. Irtin said back in, I guess it was beginning of January, I think. When I look at the comprehensive plan and I, I appreciate the problems that the developer has. But when I go back to the comprehensive plan and I see statements such as, and I think this gets back to something Mr. Irtin was alluding to, but I have not talked with him since then, so I have no idea. The comprehensive plan alludes to things like this. If there are, is there, if there's vegetation, one inch or larger, then no more than X percent of trees or vegetation with, with diameters of an inch or bigger are going to be removed. However, there is a caveat in that and it was very smart to put it there. And that is that you can go to the, the commission and if it's necessary, then that can be amended. My concern going forward, and this isn't going to help me, but I'm going to tell you that it is a concern. My concern is if you have a comprehensive plan and it states what the general intention and the general purpose is and you put yourself an out, the out is not something that means you have the latitude to just disregard it. The out means that if there's a situation, and I understand the situation. The situation is you can't leave that stand of trees that this lady was talking about and put enough parking in there to accomplish this project. I understand that. But which came first, the comprehensive plan or this project? So that from a city and a county perspective, to me, needs to be addressed. It's much more fair to go to the developer and say, look, this is what our goal is. And we are willing to deviate from that in certain circumstances to a certain extent, but we're not willing to throw it out. You can't go cut those trees down off that bank anyway, if I understand Meryl's statute. For 25 feet and if it's a bank more than 15 degrees, they're protected unless they're dead or diseased or whatever. And you talked about that too, and I understand that. So I'm not trying to be difficult, I'm trying to save somebody else. The, um, my wife and I have lived on that pond, she's lived there since 1960. The road was a dirt road when she moved in as a little girl. You know, it's our home. We don't live close enough to see the restaurants, we live up to the other end. I'm not against restaurants. I like to eat. I said that the last time. I didn't get this big, but not eating. At the same time, I have an appreciation for all my other neighbors and the quietness. And I think you are making a real effort to, to accommodate that and I, and I appreciate that. Because I suspect the project is going to go forward. I just hope you understand our concern of if I'm going to look out and see something, make it pleasant. Make it quiet. Don't make me look out there and think five years from now, you know what? I wish I had gone further. Because it's too late for all of us at that point. I'd much rather us be good friends.
Steve, could you wrap up?
Yes, I'm done. And I, I do appreciate it. I'm sorry for the last little editorializing, but it's, it, it means a lot to us.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Okay.
My name is Bob Harlston and I live next door to Clear. I live to the west of her. I'm directly across from where the restaurants will be built. And I, my concerns are the same as has been expressed here, but I haven't heard the increased lighting discussed. Maybe it was before we came in, we thought we were going to start at 5:30. Has anything been done to, to lessen the impact of nuisance, if that's going to cost?
So that's what I was alluding to before when we were talking about building placement is that the size of the building is going to help block the parking lot light. In addition to that, we will use all dark sky compliant fixtures that have cutoffs that direct the light down. We'll go to the minimum required lighting levels that the city requires. And the fact that the parking is not adjacent to the pond and we're keeping the existing trees, we're enhancing with additional trees and the mass of the building itself, all of that serves to block light that's going to be where the parking lot area is. And we can certainly look at, you know, fixtures that aren't tall fixtures. You know, what is the, the lowest height fixture that we could use that still gets us the required illumination levels that we have to have in the parking lot? So that, you know, you don't look up and see the light that, you know, that it is down closer. And as I mentioned before, the, the parcel is about 10 feet higher than the pond. And so when you look at the sightlines, when you're looking across the pond and, and the building is elevated and the building is closer, that your sightline goes sort of way up in the sky and you won't see the tops of the lights most likely where the buildings are. And we'll try and mitigate by planting as many trees as we can in between where the two buildings are so that any lighting from the parking lots is shielded and you don't see that, that light. I'm willing to say as well, to the greatest extent that I can, I can try and avoid putting light fixtures that are in between that building area so that you won't see those. Alls you'll see is the light that spills over to the ground. You won't have that fixture in your line of sight that's in between the buildings.
Okay, all right, thank you. Okay.
I was just going to ask, the, on the restaurant, on the, on the, on the east of the, I guess that's the east of the side, the nice one. The very, very nice one, instead of just the regular nice one. Where's the parking and how, how many people, how many people can fit in that restaurant and where is the parking for it?
So that parking, or that restaurant has about 50 spaces, Bill, am I right? Is that what it's dedicated somewhere up there? Yeah, so they park in front and they park down along this edge and they have some spaces that are dedicated here. And actually, the yellow line that we've drawn on here, I guess is probably the best representation. These are going to be two separate parcels. And so each has their required parking on their parcel, but at the same time, it's also a shared cross-access agreement. So if Ripianos happens to be particularly busy one night and they need a couple of spots over on the other side, then they're certainly able to park there. There's no blocking it. There's, you know, it's all open circulation through there. So this has 50-ish spaces, I think?
Fifty, fifty-six.
Fifty, fifty-six. And this is around 80, I think, is where we ended up for the other one.
Is there any, we talked about noise. I don't know, when you go shopping up in the north end of town, one is inundated with all the smells that come from all of the places that are up there. And I, 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 you know, and I don't know anything about, about HVAC and how that works and everything, but I am, I do have a concern about it going, drifting across the pond. If it's the wine and the Italian food come up at the other one, I think we're fine. If it's the unnamed.
I don't think that one would be opposed either.
If it's all that I think. Then let me ask a question this way to us and to enter Mr. Polo. Once this gets going, what do we have in terms of, A, oversight to make sure that, you know, the thousands of places I've been that have restaurants at homes near one another and the lighting is low along the ground and it doesn't look like, you know, major supermarket parking lot lighting that's up at the top? You can do this, it costs money. And my question is, if we find that there is a concern above and beyond the two, two to three percent on Aldi, the two, two to three percent traffic on the new one, the two to three percent traffic on Trooper's Way, two to three traffic, two to three percent of everything that's along Trooper's Way, when do we, are we able to come back? What recourse do we have? What avenue do we have to say? It's not wine and Italian food, it's smell, it's dumpsters. Because then what I worry about is that we didn't make them utilize the pond even more to make this about being waterfront. I want to save the trees and I wanted to be waterfront, but that one restaurant is not waterfront whatsoever. It's not utilizing anything on the waterfront. So I'm just wondering if this parcel is just simply commercial and that's what you want it for and we're going to save a little bit of the, some of the trees on the other side? And just, if we can come back, is there any way to come back? Is there any way that, that someone says?
Code.
Well, I, even before that, I mean, remember that we're only at annexation.
You've got to go through planning and zoning, back to here.
You know my feeling on, once it's out of here, in my opinion, once it's out of here, unless our person on there can convince everybody on there to do something different, I think it's a done deal. That's been my experience. So I just want us to be able to, if, if residents come back and say, you know, what I drew for the mayor had, you know, the dock down at the other end so that the people who are utilizing the water could utilize the restaurant as well. I was trying to figure out a way to make it increase your property values because you could get on a boat and go across to the water. I'm trying to figure out a way to connect the two of them. And I'm not sure this particular plan, in my opinion, does that. This does nice things for the environment and it does nice things for, for the shoreline and it's probably going to be beautiful. We'll wait and see. Again, I don't have that kind of confidence that we're going to get built what everybody else gets built, but we'll have to wait and see. We've had those discussions before. But if it's, if it's not going to be pond-centric, then it's just, it's the north end attack, it's a north end assault there. And we're just going to do what we've done, you know, all, all the rest of the time. So if there's any way, you know, a year and a half in that when it's done, I'm not sure what recourse any one of the audience has if, so I, and particularly I, I've seen this now for approximately 14 minutes. And I'm not sure that's long enough to form, and I'm quick, I'm good, I'm smart and I've been through this a lot. But I'm not sure that's long enough for me to formulate other ideas or other.
Excuse me, how much more of a problem would it be for it to become more so waterfront? So the customers that are in, that are dining could see the shoreline and see the water?
Well, we could certainly look at, and I guess one of the concerns that we evaluated while we were developing that plan is not only the, the uses that we're going to have on our site, but additionally, as you get closer to the front, that helps to screen some of your light, the Aldi parking lot and Route 13 in general, the uses on the opposite side of 13. So again, that, that was kind of our thought. If, if the, the overall idea is incorporate the waterfront more.
I would, I would think so. I would think so. You don't.
We can look at that, but I.
That's not what I'm, that's not what I'm hearing from the audience.
So you don't want to see the water? Okay, okay.
Okay.
Okay, okay.
Just wanted to make sure I was on the same page. So that was assault.
On the other hand, I will, I will take, in, in the form of your question, this particular area is right on Route 13. So with all due respect to all of the people who are here, they've seen high traffic and seen lights before in their houses. Because they live right on Route 13. So, you know, there's, there's that side of it as well. The question is, is how much, how much can we mitigate it and what, what do we have later on?
And that's the way that I approach it. And they'll tell you that we met some of the residents on the side before we began the annexation and that was something that they had brought up. And I have notes in my little black book somewhere that, you know, the light up at Dagsboro, the traffic that's there, the place at Chili's, I think it is, or Buffalo Wild Wings, whatever it is across the street. You know, we're always hearing that, you know, all that. What can we do? And this is, you know, what we have proposed, you know, in that effort to help, help try and shield some of that hard commercial at that intersection.
We can increase the landscaping all the way up to the tip of the corner here and probably help improve your situation. Because right now, there's very little up here and we can certainly make that much denser and that might try and screen Wawa and that was our plan to try and keep it, I know that's a good idea.
Okay. You're okay? All right, we're going to, we'll just see if you're okay. Move forward, move forward. Move forward. Okay, we're going to move forward. Thank you. I do want to say, I, I totally understand, I've had some good discussions with several of the individuals here. And, and I think that there's been a very good faith effort to address those issues. And I, we've, we've had some developers that weren't quite as flexible. So I appreciate both sides and I think that, like I said, we're, we're at the beginning of the process and we'll have more opportunities to, to discuss these things when it gets to, to the planning commission. And then it comes back to us, okay? So thank you everyone for that.
Thank you.
Next up is the Pemberton Pilot Discussion. Andy? Andy?
You break it, you buy it.
That was your name, right? He threw his name, him and Julia.
How are you, Mo?
A little less exciting. They get that on camera? So, uh, I apologize that this is done a little bit differently. We'd love to have gotten this into your hands in the packet earlier. But it is right here. So I gave her, I went ahead and provided a summary. I'll hit the summary real quick and then I'll introduce Mo, for those who don't know, Mr. Krone. And then I'll turn it over to him and most of the questions will be able to be answered by him. So Pemberton Pilot, Payment and Little Taxes. It's a project that we've been working on at Pemberton Manor that's presented to us. As you can see from the resolution, the goal is to, to do some renovations to Pemberton Manor. And, and those renovations would be done over the next X amount of time. And then we would, instead of them paying taxes for the next 20 years, they would have this payment plan, which is the Schedule A file that you have in your packet. The agreement has been reviewed and vetted from our department and through our mayor's office. And then we have a couple of things that are highlighted here that are read, some minor changes that we made, lastly. But I did want to point out the proposed improvements that are here. Primarily renovated kitchens and bathrooms. You can see what those itemized, those items are. Landscaping around the property. The maintenance shack would still be maintained and then some play spaces, some larger play spaces for the kiddos. And then a comprehensive security system. I've got a couple of pictures of the security system if anybody's interested, but I didn't include that in the, in the packet that I presented to you. I will go ahead and turn it over to Mr. Krone. He is, would be able to talk more specifically about timeline and total cost for the project and be able to answer any questions that you all have at this time.
Thank you all for allowing me to be here, especially, thank you Mayor and Councilman Jackson for all your help in getting me to this stage and Council President for all the time you've given me and helping me throughout this process. As you, as I'm sure many of you know, Pemberton Manor is a property that was built in 1974. Property is 100, is 209 units, 143 of which are designated affordable. They're under a half contract and 66 are conventional units. The property went into HUD foreclosure in 2011 and I'm sure many of you know. And sixty-six are conventional units. Uh, the property went into HUD foreclosure in two thousand and eleven, and I'm sure many of you know there was many crime issues. The occupancy was at about sixty percent. Uh, there were management issues. There were major crime, systemic crime issues as well at the property. Um, when we acquired the property in two, beginning in two thousand and twelve, um, there was a lot of commitments made to fix the management at the property and try to make the property, uh, something that the neighborhood and the community could be proud of. Um, we've, we've invested significant money over the past few years to try to bring the property up. And we've, we've been able to achieve the feeling of community, we believe, on the property as well as in the neighborhood. One of the ways we've been able to do that over the last few years, as Kelly, the property manager who's here with us, has brought on quite a few fantastic programs that we're very proud of, that go on daily or weekly, as some of them are once a year. I want to briefly highlight some of the activities that we currently have. Um, we have a daily after-school program with homework and tutoring assistance. Every day in our community room, chil- excuse me, children come by and there's food and then you get assistance with homework, et cetera. Additionally, during the summer, many of our children rely on the school lunch program. So during the summer, there's a breakfast and lunch program in our community room. Uh, we have a small library in there as well. Um, we have many weekly, I think we have etiquette training every week with the Waukesha County Health Department. Um, we have some college prep classes as well as many other programs. Um, my favorite to attend every year, and I know, uh, many people here in the council, Councilman Jackson, there's been many times at the annual back-to-school event. Councilman Jackson was there the last few years giving away uniforms. I know Mayor Day has attended many times and Councilman Iton.
Two thousand and eleven.
I, I know. I believe the first time I went there, I met you there in two thousand and fifteen. That was my first time. Um, met at actually a back-to-school event where we, we give out backpacks and school supplies, which we still give out throughout the year for the children that don't have. Um, all, all these activities have, have led the property to have a much better relationship with management. We've been able to approve management significantly, hire better staffing. And the property is moving in the right direction and we're very proud of a lot of what goes on at the property. I'm here today to discuss the, the pilot that's proposed in front of us. Um, as you can see up on the screen, there's multiple items proposed. The number, the first thing we have is a state-of-the-art HD camera system that we're proposing to install. And if you have the images that were just handed out showing the camera placements, it was reviewed by the local deputies as well as the chief of police and signed off, um, as far as the placements of the cameras. At the time, we were proposing to install exterior cameras. Uh, since then, I believe it's on the plan, we're adding cameras inside the hallways as well. So the ki- the system has gotten significantly larger. Um, additionally, the camera system is remote access by both the local police department as well as management, twenty-four hours a day on their mobile devices, on, in their, in their vehicles as well as back in the office. We believe that's going to assist tremendous with the police department's ability to monitor the property as well as improve the security, hopefully reduce their calls for service, allow them to use less resources to monitor the property as every, every hallway will have cameras as well as all the exterior of the property so that they can see what's going on and respond when needed with prior knowledge of what's going on. Additionally, there will be access to historical footage, so if they ever need something, they will have access to that as well. Uh, additionally, the most important part of the project is, one of the more important parts, is the interior renovation that we're proposing inside every apartment. As I mentioned, a hundred and forty-three of the units are affordable, but the renovation project is going to cover the entire property. Uh, all two hundred and nine units are going to have new kitchens, which would include new cabinets, new countertops, um, new plumbing fixtures, lighting, flooring, paint, et cetera. So they'll have brand-new kitchens in all the homes as well as brand-new bathrooms, which is floorings, commode, uh, tub, surrounds, vanity, lighting, et cetera. Have a brand-new bathroom. We know those are the areas that have been brought up both by the residents as well as the, the, the mayor and Councilwoman has mentioned that. So those are the areas we put our primary focus on, those two rooms. Additionally, in the mayor's walkabouts, I know many of the residents have brought up different items which were in turn brought up with us, which we have proposing to do here as well. Um, that includes new landscaping, the entrance to the property as well as new signage, um, removing the fencing, the entrance walkway to the property so that we have more welcome environment. Um, there was also some mention of playgrounds for younger children. So we have on here two proposed, I believe we call them pot lots. Um, but they're for playgrounds for children young, under the age of, I believe, six. So that there's, we do have a lot of young children with three-bedroom apartments. We do have a lot of young children, so this would give them, um, a place to play besides the larger playgrounds that we do have. So on the pilot, we're, we're, we're planning to expend over a million dollars to do all this work and our goal is to complete it within three years of our start date. Um, and as Andy mentioned earlier, Pemberton is going to continue to make tax payments. The tax payments would continue, would start at eighteen thousand dollars a year and increase one point five percent every year. Uh, Pemberton would can, would complete the project, as I mentioned, and have their full capital in the project within three years of the start date, and the pilot would last, uh, twenty years. That's the length of the pilot. And I thank you all for your time and happy to answer any questions I can.
I just, I just have one question. Um, and maybe Mr. Toman can weigh in on, on this too. Uh, having, this is kind of like a libertarian Fourth Amendment issue, uh, with the camera system and having the police have immediate access to it, are there potential Fourth Amendment issues? With, because I know, I mean, I, I worked loss prevention for Walmart for many years and there was a process for, you know, ha- giving out footage, and especially live footage on private property, so.
It's become the norm now, typically at construction, that, um, uh, it's usually just an IP address, uh, and that that's given directly to SPD. Um, so SPD is gaining access to more rather than installing and owning an expensive government-run camera system. It's essentially relying on the private network. Now, nothing, as far as I can tell, would compel, you know, uh, ma- and maybe there is something that would compel under certain circumstances, but nothing as far as I know would compel anyone to give that access. So it's just a matter of if in these shared spaces, if the property owner would want to give that access to SPD.
I mean, are the residents aware that law enforcement has twenty-four-hour access to?
They would be. I mean, we haven't, yeah, obviously installed it. We have mentioned this project to the residents. Um, we actually sat down building by building with everyone, everyone who came, property, and we had about a hun- over a hundred signatures of, of support from our, from our residents. We're quite excited. We mentioned the camera system. I think, oh, obviously, cr- crime is a concern at the property and they want that addressed. So they were obviously pleased, I would say, more about the in-unit stuff, but definitely about the cameras as well.
Okay. Uh, the only concern I have with it being a situation like that, if there is an incident and then the police has video and then when we get to court, it gets thrown out.
So the historical footage.
Yeah, that's, that's more of an attorney issue, but I don't know, I'm just, that's just a question.
I mean, I think the cameras, as the mayor said earlier, are pretty much accepted at this point. I mean, there are certain areas where you shouldn't use them. You notify people that they're, they're being cer- you know, the cameras are on.
Signs do get put up with the cameras.
And so that, so that it's not that they're unaware of it. And I'm assuming that when they move into the apartments, if they don't like the idea, you know, they certainly don't have to live there. I mean, I think they're okay as well.
Yeah, okay. I just, I just didn't know. They're in the common areas, they're in the hallways, which are open anyway. They're, they're in the hallways and in the exterior.
They're in public places.
Yeah, I think you'd be surprised how many we, we have access to now, all over the city. Apartment complexes, retail, office buildings, you name it.
I just became you.
Well, I just became me because it's, it's happening where I.
No, I, I just, it bothers me that, that cameras have to go over where people live. It just, it bothers me that we, that we. When I became the mayor in two thousand and nine, the numbers out of Fairground Drive and, and we worked, you worked, I worked, everybody worked so hard to get them down and all of those things that you're going to do are absolutely needed and, and absolutely wonderful. I, I, I was in there and helped with, with the, I just, you know, poor people aren't the only people who commit crimes. And I've got a couple of blocks, I'd like to put them on around my house that would shut down some of the nonsense, but I don't necessarily have that option. It just, it.
Well, I'm going to tell you this, Jim. As I walked the premises, the mayor walked the premises and Captain Lindsay walked the premises, we saw a lot of vandalism. Lot of things that were unnecessarily done, that should have, should have not been done. And someone has to be held accountable for that. Because when you spend as much money as this company has probably spent in repairs, this is, it was ridiculous. I mean, if I could show you the pictures of some of the stuff that we stole.
I guess my question for you, so is that, is the backs, the back is still closed? You can't get all the way through, right?
Yes.
Why would, and, and this is, I don't know the answer to this. It's just, these come up and we as council people have about six minutes to come up with our questions and after we hear what you have to say. So I, you know, I've had a longer time, I have a longer list of questions for you. But why don't you take the money that you're going to put into cameras and put it into full-time, twenty-four hours a day, full staff of people who, who are working there, not necessarily in security.
So we do have a security team that do, we have two full-time.
Right. So the answer is, because I, I don't know that, that it, this is, it's, I think it's more efficient. This allows the police department to have access to what is going on at the property and I, I don't, I will.
It will stop some of the nonsense.
This is not.
I completely agree with you. I completely agree with you. The biggest arguments I ever had with the police chief were about cameras and we're watching people. And when does that?
Well, and I think it's not necessarily a private, privacy issue, but it's, this is private property and the government has full access to the camera system immediately on private property.
Granted, granted, granted by the property owner.
Granted by the property owner, but.
It's not in your house?
There, there's, no, but it's still.
With all due respect, I don't, I don't want to step.
Spaces, I, I can understand that. And I understand the property owner is willing to do that, but there's other people who have rights as well. And, and I think that, you know, as far as the individual, concerned about individual rights with amendment rights, uh, you know, that there should be a barrier. Uh, you know, just from my experience, you know, I had a process. I, you know, the police did not have access twenty-four hours a day to Walmart cameras. But I had a paperwork process that I had to go through as the person that had to simply decide, you know, what's relevant for the police, then for them to have access to four hundred cameras and thousands and thousands of hours of footage.
But Mr. Mr. Boda, it, it may, the police chief would probably throttle me for saying this, but it may make you feel slightly better to know that there's nobody who's going to be watching the cameras live. It just doesn't. It is, but one of the reasons why a, a government-owned and run camera system makes no sense is because we couldn't staff it to watch it.
No, it just, the, the, the point is, is that, is that even though nobody from the government is sitting there twenty-four hours a day watching, the government has twenty-four-hour access. It's still. You know, I mean, that's, you know, there's, that there's not a, a, a barrier there to, you know, that it checks and balances.
Well, it is, it is a nonsense. It is a people doing things they don't have.
With historical footage generally, generally, and we can make this a caveat, with historical footage, generally the police department does have to come down to get that from us. So we can require a warrant as we would on something else if you need to have historical footage. So they, they would have access to the live feed, but they would, uh, as far as if they wanted footage to go to court, they would need a warrant or whatever it is.
Or it's a release.
Or a release or something, which is generally required when a camera system is like this, that are not live. And can I, can I just respond to the other comment about the poor people? I, because it's not being done because of that. This was something that was requested by the, by the chief of police when we, when we approached. And I, I want to say that she brought it up on her own, but it was something that was discussed as an improvement to the property.
And you didn't send her here today to talk to me about that.
Call her up. Call her up.
And I, and I, I think it's being done because it can help, to help the community. Uh, it's not being done because it's a poor community.
Whatever, whatever the mayor and Councilwoman, uh, Jackson want in this property, I'm going to do for them because it, it, single-handedly almost drops the assault rate's crime rate by about forty percent, just the calls on Fairground Drive.
It has dropped?
It did. Back when, when, before we dropped even more than we have now. The number of children, the number of people, children, the number of children that I taught myself that live there now with their children, it was a home away from home for me many, many, many times. In fact, I feel more comfortable there than I do in many places. I feel more comfortable there than I do on that development up north. Yeah, thank you.
Mo, can you just speak real quickly to when these construction projects are happening, um, in active construction in the homes and how, uh, the residents within those homes will navigate the construction?
So it does take some time to get the project underway, obviously. So there would be ample notice, the residents would know what's coming. And the way I've done this in the past at every property is slightly different. Um, they would be noticed to, uh, one apartment at a time. Um, sometimes they kind of stagger day by day. And we try to go in if possible, and it depends on the contractor, if we can, we go in and try to do, within one day, finish a kitchen and finish a bathroom. So they don't ever have to go a night without a kitchen or without a bathroom. So obviously, there's one, there's one bathroom apartment, one kitchen. Most people cook at home, so you don't want to leave them overnight without a kitchen. So we'll go in, we'll send a big team.
Takes about a day to do the whole project.
So sometimes we'll do, you know, just a kitchen, just a bathroom, or if we can, if the crew's big enough, we can knock out one apartment, just finish it up in there. Um, once we're going to go in, obviously, we're going to attack anything else that we can that's there, that's necessary. So sometimes the project will take more than a day, but we don't want to leave anyone without a kitchen and a bathroom, obviously overnight. So.
I've got, um, I'll cha- I'm going to change gears. You mentioned a million dollars roughly? Over a million.
It's closer to one point three, yeah.
Okay, so that's approximately forty, almost five thousand an apartment? If you're doing all the apartments, roughly? To do all this?
So I believe we've come out to more. I didn't do the math per apartment.
Okay, I would.
I, I mean, I've done it and I just don't have it in front of me, but the, the.
Sorry. I mean, I, I just, what I don't, and I, don't take me, don't take this the wrong way. I want to make sure when we upgrade, we upgrade. Because if you upgrade and the people will recognize the fact of what the investment is in, in, in them, then generally, generally, the people will have a much better response on keeping it that way.
So I can tell you from experiences, I do, I do renovate apartments, it's something I do quite frequently. Um, it's about six thousand dollars per apartment, um, and, and that is sufficient to do a kitchen and a bathroom.
Okay.
Because there's no appliances replaced. It's just the.
Correct. And we, we do buy in bulk. We, we get very aggressive pricing on everything. And, and it's high-quality material. We're talking about wood cabinets. We're not talking about junk that's going to fall apart.
I'm coming in there. I'm coming.
You're, you'll be invited.
I'll go with it.
That goes without saying. That goes without saying, Councilwoman Jackson, I think, we know that you're there a lot. And that's fine, because we welcome it. We're very comfortable with the material we're going to put in. I know, I, the material I'm planning on putting in, I, I use elsewhere now on, on very high-end departments. The same tub and surround, I use it very high-end departments in Virginia, the exact same material. And that's what I would be using here.
Just checking.
Nope. And, and I welcome all of you to come and take a look after.
Oh, we will.
Yeah, we want to walk through.
Sure.
Wes, we okay now? Move it forwards, move it forward, move it forward, move it forward. We're good?
Thank you.
Thanks, man.
Andy's going to be.
Thank you. Thanks, Andy. Okay, let me get back to my sheet here. That, uh, first thing I need is, I need a pen that writes.
Here.
We gotta get, let's, let's.
In our budget section, I'd ask for anything, but we're getting pens.
You got it. We're getting pens that say, Salt City of Salisbury. Like, where are my pens? I tried each one of them. Like these.
One for you.
All right, at this time, uh, we finished the agenda and we are going to, uh, convene shortly into closed session to discuss an appointment, employment assignment, promotion, blah, 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 uh, under the anto- annotated code of Maryland three dash three oh five B one.
B one?
And, B one.
B three.
B as in boy. So I'll entertain a motion now to go into closed session.
Second.
Mr. Boda. And Ms. Jackson. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye. All those in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
And the chair votes aye. Okay. Do you have the list? And, yeah, let's take a break, a couple-minute break. We'd like to welcome everybody back. The council has just come out of closed session where we interviewed candidates for the District Three Council Vacancy. District Five, I'm sorry, District Five Council Vacancy. I said District Three, what is it? Yeah, I'm vacant, but that's all right. Okay, considering there's no more business, we are adjourned. Thank you.